The Parker Planning Commission meeting of September 10th, 2020. We'll call this meeting to order at 7:05. Would you please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance? John?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, thank you, John. Roll call, absent is Eric, seated for Eric is Tracy, and all other members are present. Are there any additions or deletions from the agenda? Bryce?
Yeah, sorry, we were on mute there. Chair, for tonight, the Bowie zoning request, there will be no presentation, and you were emailed earlier a proposed condition to continue that to October 8th.
Okay.
Motion, I'm sorry, not a motion.
Okay. Next then, the approval of the minutes of January 23rd, 2020. January, July, wow, where'd the year go? So anyway, are there any corrections or additions or deletions from the minutes from July 23rd? I'll just go down the list, commissioners. Just say something if you have a correction or a deletion. Anybody?
None.
Okay.
None.
Okay. Then do we have a motion?
I move to approve the July 23rd, 2020 meeting minutes.
I second.
It's been moved by John, seconded by Eliana, that we approve the minutes from the July 23rd, 2020 meeting, and I'll call the roll. John?
Here.
Rich?
Here.
Ruth Ann?
Hi.
Kim?
Here.
Eliana?
Hi.
Tracy?
Yes.
And me, yes, so pass 7-0. Thank you, commissioners. Next item, or just for the audience. The, we as sitting Planning Commission members take the role, responsibility, and duties of the Planning Commission seriously. When we, when we as the Planning Commission review site plans, zonings, and other land use requests during the public hearing, the Planning Commission is sitting as a quasi judicial body. For projects that are under review by the town, we are unable to, by state law, to discuss matters of the project when approached by members of the public outside of public hearing. This does not mean we are not engaged or interested in hearing from members of the public, quite the opposite. We encourage and appreciate public participation as part of the public hearing process. The public hearing is where we listen to the comments, concerns, technical analysis, and other information provided by the town, staff, developer, and the public. This information is combined with the requirements of the Land Development Ordinance, state and federal laws, and that allows the Planning Commission to remain objective, fair, and balanced when making a recommendation or taking action. Simply put, the Planning Commission is required by law to remain impartial to ensure that each project, the developer, the town staff, and the overall community gets the due process it deserves. To that end, members of the audience, thank you for attending the Planning Commission, this Planning Commission meeting. Before we get into the meat of the meeting, I want to emphasize that you wish to join and make public comments on any item at this hearing, you must be joined into the Zoom webinar link posted on the town's website, Facebook Live participants are only able to view and listen to the meeting. Now would be a good time to leave Facebook Live and join the Planning Commission meeting on Zoom if you wish to comment on any agenda item by using the Zoom Raise Your Hand feature. We appreciate your attendance at the Planning Commission and your cooperation. Okay, the, that business out of the way, we will now move to item number 6A on our agenda. Carousel Farms filing number one, lots 11 and 12, block 1, for a fence variance. We will open the public hearing at 7:10. Brianna, we're all yours.
Perfect. Good evening, Chairman and Planning Commission. This is a request for a variance for a six-foot privacy fence adjacent to open space. The public knows requirements for this application have been met. The applicant Julie Trail is requesting two variances to allow for a six-foot privacy fence adjacent to open space on separate lots. Lot, one lot is located at 16022 Hayloft Lane, and the other is 11092 Hayloft Street. The subject property, properties are located northeast of Main Street and Newland Gold Boulevard. Section 13.07.140 C9E2 outlines the requirements for fences adjacent to open space. This section of the code was established in the year 2001 in states where public parks or open space are bordered predominantly by private rear or side yards. Only open fences, such as split rail fences, no higher than 48 inches, may be erected on the common boundaries with the park or open space. Opaque fences and walls, such as privacy fences, are prohibited in yard bordering the park or open space. The intent of this section of the ordinance is to ensure that dedicated open space is accessible and open to the public, is not walled off creating unsightly fence canyons, and is to enhance safety by increasing visibility and eyes on the street within the public areas. Typically, these open areas are adjacent to trails, parks, and other pedestrian activities. Having open and limited heights on fences provides additional visibility on the pedestrian areas and enhances the presence of safety within these areas. In order to grant relief from the Land Development Ordinance, the applicant must demonstrate a practical difficulty and undue hardship caused by narrowness of the lot, shallowness or shape of the specific piece of property, topographic conditions, or other unique conditions of such piece of property. If the town determines a variance may be granted, the variance shall not be detrimental to the public good or stray from the intent of Title 13 of the Land Development Ordinance. Staff has reviewed the request and, as outlined in staff's report, has determined that the request does not meet the approval criteria set forth in the Land Development Ordinance. Therefore, staff is recommending, that planning commission recommends, that town council deny the variance request to allow a six-foot privacy fence adjacent to open space as the request does not meet the following approval criteria, as there's no practical difficulty or undue hardship caused by the narrowness, shallowness, or shape of the specific piece of property, topographic conditions, or other exceptional conditions of such piece of property. Please note there are two separate requests for tonight, which require two separate motions. Staff is available for questions that planning commissioners may have. The applicant is also available this evening for any questions, and they also have a presentation that they would like to present at this time.
Well, let's do Planning Commission questions first, can we do that? And then for you, Brianna, and then we'll let the applicant present? Or would you rather combine them?
That works.
Okay. Planning Commissioners, questions for Brianna, John?
Brianna, I may have missed it in there somewhere. Was there a building permit pulled for this and an inspection by the Building Department performed?
The town does not require building permits on fences less than six, six feet or eight?
Eight feet.
Eight feet in height, so this would not require a building permit.
Okay.
Thank you.
Rich, questions?
Yes, Brianna, does this ordinance apply to all subdivisions, no matter their age?
All subdivisions approved after 2001, when this ordinance was in place, is required to meet this section of the code.
Okay.
More, Rich?
That's it.
Okay, Ruth Ann?
I'd like to hold my questions till after I've seen the other presentation.
Okay, no problem. Kim?
My question is, is this open space, how long is it? And it looks like it's between Main Street and, I'm having a hard time seeing the presentation.
Hayloft Lane.
Hayloft Lane. How long is that, and that portion of just the sidewalk from street to street is considered open space?
The portion between connecting Hayloft to Main Street is considered open space. I unfortunately don't have that exact mention in front of me, but it, as you can tell, it's the length of the lot plus probably an additional 50 feet to get to the main sidewalk along Main Street.
Okay.
It'll be approximately 150 feet, give or take.
Okay. Eliana?
I was gonna do my question, how long is it?
Okay, Tracy?
No questions right now, Gary.
Okay. All right, next, can you all bring the applicant up? If the applicant?
Julie, you're ready to, you're ready to speak, please? Sorry, just enabling. Okay.
Please, good evening, but please state your name and address, just for the record. I know we've got it, but we just always have this step that we do.
Julie Trail, and I live at 16022 Hayloft Lane in Parker, Colorado, 80134.
Thanks for going along with us, Julie. You may start your presentation.
Good evening, and thank you for letting me speak to you tonight regarding our fence variance. I am speaking to you on behalf of myself, my husband Adam, and our neighbors, me and Cory. We are petitioning the town of Parker for a fence variance as directed by our HOA. Our property is back up to Main Street, and the builder constructed a privacy fence on the back of our properties, which reduces the traffic noise and protects our child and pet. However, the side of our properties, which abuts the pedestrian access into our neighborhood from Main Street, originally had just a three-foot, four-inch-high split rail fence. This split rail fence is 50 feet away from Main Street, which is a very busy street, and is not adequate to protect from the dangers of being so close to a busy street. Go to the first slide, please. Can you see the presentation? Can you see the presentation? I can't.
Oh, we're on the next slide, it says exceptional situation.
Okay, it should be on the first slide where the picture of our fences.
We are there. Rosemary, I cannot see the presentation. So I don't think the screen is shared.
The screen, the presentation isn't up.
Don't go to the Zoom.
There we go.
There we go, thank you.
Sorry, Julie, just bear with us, you know, this technology stuff.
No worries, bear with my speaking. The first picture, first two pictures here is a picture of our privacy fence and split rail fence as they exist today, which you can see it's, it's 50 feet away from Main Street, and there's a lot of traffic, big and small, all day, and people are speeding, going over the 40 mile an hour speed limit quite frequently. The privacy fence we installed on the side of our properties reduces noise and gives us an adequate barrier between our property and the sidewalk to reduce the likelihood of any abductions of our son or pet, and reduces the likelihood of our son and pets getting over the fence and wandering into traffic. Next slide, please. All right, so this is the code as it stands, and we feel that we fit under an exceptional situation. We do feel that granting us a variance would work in concert with the purpose of the code as the first part of the applicable code supports special circumstances related to our location next to Main Street, a six-lane road. The privacy fence supports the architectural look of the neighborhood and is like those that exist throughout our neighborhood and neighboring areas. Next slide, please. This is a picture of the privacy fence in the neighborhood right next door to us, so they have a privacy fence and a split rail fence along their pedestrian access to Main Street. Next slide, please. This is another picture of Bradbury Ranch with the pedestrian access from Main Street. Next slide, please. And this is a picture of the neighborhood directly across from us, and they have privacy fences all the way down the pedestrian walkway. Next slide, please. And this is a picture of Clark Farms, which has privacy fences along the pedestrian access. Next slide, please. And this is Clark Farms and the privacy fences on the pedestrian access from Jordan Road. These and other neighborhoods all have privacy fences at the pedestrian access to their neighborhoods from a busy roadway, Main Street and Jordan Road, respectively. Our privacy fence does not impair the purpose of the code or cause a detriment to the public. Me and Cory originally submitted a request to the HOA for the privacy fence when their house was burglarized. Having a privacy fence has, has given them an improved peace of mind after being burglarized and their dogs jumping the fence. We submitted our, our request to the HOA for a privacy fence because we have a young child and we're concerned about our proximity to Main Street and the inherent dangers of possible abductions, burglaries, which increases due to the ability for the assailant to make a quick exit onto Main Street. Having a privacy fence during this pandemic has provided our two-year-old son, who does not understand social distancing, to safely play in our backyard during this unusual time. It has given us a peace of mind, especially when there was a motorcyclist who rode down the sidewalk onto Main Street from our neighborhood. Originally, we both obtained approval from our HOA in June and July 2019, respectively, to place a privacy fence behind the split rail fence, which we did. We received a letter from the HOA eight months after the privacy fence was constructed, thanking us for completing the project according to the CCRs. Then three days afterwards, we received another letter requesting we take down the privacy fence. We have spoken with our neighbors, and they are supportive of our fence. These are the people that will eventually make up our HOA. We are terrified for the safety of our child and pets if we have to take down our privacy fence. Hopefully, you understand why our circumstances are exceptional and that you will make a recommendation in our, in our favor. Thank you for taking the time to hear why our fence is important to our family's health and safety without any negative effects to the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. We'll ask commissioners to see if they have any questions for you. John?
Julie, I have two questions for you. What is the actual length of the fence behind your property that you built? And how long ago was it completed?
It was completed July of 2019, and I'm sorry, I don't know the length of the fence that we installed. I just measured, but it was 50 feet from Main Street.
Okay, John?
Thank you.
Rich?
If this is, given a variance for this, is the HOA gonna come back and approve it for you?
They, they have since, sent us a letter, and they also sent it to the town of Parker that we would need to take down the split rail fence and then just make it look like, I think, I think we have to come to an agreement of who's gonna manage the fence.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Ruth Ann? Ruth Ann? You there?
Yeah, I'm here. I'm confused, so is this fence part of the fence that, that actually has a corner to it? So it, it is across where Main Street actually is with your property in addition to being along the pedestrian access?
I didn't, I didn't quite understand the question, but the back of our lot has a privacy fence, and then the side is the picture that you saw. So basically, we have a privacy fence on the back and the other side of our lot, but we had a split rail and now a privacy fence on the other side of our lot. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I just, it ties into a whole fencing system, okay.
Anything else, Ruth Ann?
Not at this time.
Okay, Kim?
I don't have anything at this time.
Okay, Eliana?
I'm good for now.
Okay, Tracy? Tracy?
Sorry. A quick question, a quick question on the letters that you referenced. So you mentioned that the HOA had sent an initial letter saying thank you for complying and getting the project complete, and then the second letter was what?
The second letter was three days afterwards, and it said that we needed to remove our privacy fence. It didn't give us any reasons or anything until it was back and forth, and then they, then they told me that I needed to get a variance from the town of Parker.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Thank you, Julie. Any questions, commissioners, for Brianna?
I have two more questions that have.
All right, Ruth Ann?
The first one is, were you ever contacted, Julie, directly by the town of Parker requesting that you take down the fence?
No, ma'am, I was not.
Okay, and Julie, Brianna, the question I have for you is, what is staff's position on what the detriment to the public good is?
The staff position is that there is... It's a great question.
Thanks.
So, the ordinance for this section lists a number of reasons for how we can and what we can approve a variance for, and then if it falls into one of those categories, we have to ensure that it is, like you said, not detrimental to the town, which I believe would be, it would not create any undue hardship to the town or any other public entity.
Okay, so, I want to restate what I think I heard you said, which is that if we find that there is in fact an extraordinary difficulty or undue hardship that is created, that would be created if we made them take the fence down, that you don't in fact know of any detriment to the public good that would be caused by creating this variance, is that correct?
So that, I'm sorry if I may add, so the detriment is, the, the purpose of the ordinance is to allow for eyes on that open space, prevent fence canyons, and allow the, the safety of, again, eyes on that. So the detriment would be that it would be closed off, not visible from adjoining property owners and a fence canyon.
Okay. And when, I just want to have a clear understanding. So when we have a situation like this where we, we're looking at possibly doing a variance, there might be specific circumstances that are really quite unique that would come into play. Do you feel that even though that would generally be to the detriment, and in most situations with the open space, is that still a detriment when it is so close to a very busy street where there are eyes going up and down and seeing what's going on in that area all the time anyway?
So I think that's an interpretation that the Planning Commission could make. Staff's interpretation and reading it in particular was not really, so detriment is a piece of it, but it's also whether there's a hardship based on the topography, shape, those types of things. And that, that is in particular, at least in our interpretation, where we, it doesn't meet the code.
Right, and that's why I asked the question in two separate parts, is because the, the threshold is that we have to find that there's, that it meets one of those categories. And then the, the second part of that is, in addition, there's no detriment. So there's, there's two parts to the question for us, I think. And that's why I was trying to get clarification on your position for what the actual detriment to the public good is in this particular instance, not just generally with open spaces.
Right.
Okay, Ruth Ann?
I'm good.
Okay, Kim?
So Brianna, what is the difference between what Ms. Trail is asking for and some of those other fences that you, that were pointed out? What, what would her situation be that doesn't meet the criteria that those other situations did?
So for some of those instances, Clark Farms was approved and developed prior to the ordinance being in place. So this ordinance wouldn't apply to those. In this instance, across, directly across the street from theirs, that area is actually was zoned right of way, so it wouldn't fall into this category because it wasn't considered open space. So there are a couple instances where it's pre, pre the zoning code being in place, it wasn't zoned open space, therefore, it wouldn't fall into this category. Those were some of the instances that she showed.
Were any of the instances that she showed, were any of those variances? Or were they all not variances?
They were not variances. This is our first fence variance in the last at least 10 years.
All right, Kim, Eliana?
Julie, I have a question, Eliana Burke. Do you have a DRC formal process within your HOA association?
Can you tell me what is DRC?
A DRC is a design review, or it could be a DRR, which is a design review request to make changes or, and like if you want to paint your home, you want to put in landscaping, et cetera. It's a formalized process that you do within your HOA. Do you have that in place?
Yes, and we applied to them. Me and Cory, our neighbors, got their approval from that committee in June of 2019. After they got approved, then we applied, and they, they approved us in July 2019. And then we both put up the fences.
And they made you, they made you unaware of any avail that there might be a variance or there might be an issue? Like, they didn't have that, they did not have that knowledge?
They did not tell us anything about that.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that.
Okay. Tracy?
No more questions.
Okay. If there are no further questions, as this is a public hearing. Yes?
Can I, can I ask one more?
Sure.
Hold on, I have my train of thought. Do, do HOAs typically approach the planning, the, I'm sorry, the planning department in situations like? the planning commi, the, I'm sorry, the planning department in situations like this, if they're unclear as to what is going on? How closely does the, the planning department, the Parker Planning Department work with HOAs in the area to make sure that residents are following codes that some folks might not be aware of?
I would say it depends. There are HOAs that do reach out and ask questions. All of these subdivisions do have approved landscape plans and fence plans that they do need to follow that the HOA should be enforcing. Unfortunately, Town of Parker is very large, so we can't interact with everyone all the time. But we do try our best to make sure that the developers, HOAs, everyone understands what was approved.
Okay, and, and Brianna, I'm going to add to that. As someone who's served on boards for the Town of Parker, I agree 100% with what you're saying. The other issue is, is that whenever we have had a request, for example, where I currently live, uh, for someone that may want to change from a simple fence, you know, just a whatever, a small picket fence to a large vinyl fence, we always defer to not only our codes that we have within our rules and regulations and design codes, but we also defer back to the Town of Parker with the municipal codes. So I, I'm, it's an assumption on my part, but I think that, um, the HOA in this case did not go back and do any due diligence and, and try to do any kind of discovery. And we always encourage that of everyone, uh, including myself as someone who serves. Whenever we get a request, I try to do as much digging as I possibly can to really help the homeowners out, which is why we were there.
Okay, we're kind of getting into discussion. As this is a public hearing, we will open the discussion to public comment on this item. You use the raise your hand feature on the Zoom conference. Rosemary, do we have any hands raised?
We do, Chair. We have me that would like to speak.
Okay.
You can speak.
Hello?
Hi, yeah.
Hi, um, this is me, Yoon. I'm living 11092 Hayloft Street with my husband and two dogs. Thanks for giving an opportunity to speak up this hearing. I bought this house January 2018 in Clay at Pine Grove. Now 35 household currently living here. HOA is managed by Century Communities. Actual Home Association is not really organized yet. Since I moved in here, my backyard was hard to maintain clean. There was many dust, debris all the time flew inside my backyard. Also, I worry about traffic accident may cause by my jumping dog. Another happens, my house burglarized last year, April. It was daytime between 12:00 PM to 1:00 PM. Front door was broken, house was damaged. Also, my house located cul-de-sac, this covered front shape make a bag away, which more close to Main Street, just 35 feet away. So I requested six foot neighborhood fence, got an approval by management company. Julie, my neighbor also got, got an approval too. Even one month later, we need to replace the yard gate, which is just one year old because HOA asked to match the fence color. So I didn't expect at all our fence will be a problem. We worked with legal specialist to find right code. Our situation is exactly the purpose of the variance. Please allow us this variance. Our actual neighbors support us. This variance would not affect to the public. Please consider to keep six foot fence. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Rosemary, any other, uh, commenters?
No sir, not at this time.
Okay.
Oh, there's one more. Oh wait, somebody just didn't show up.
Okay.
It's Chris, Christopher De Spain.
Hi, good evening. Uh, just wanted, I don't know if this is the right place to say this or not, but I'm a resident of this community and in full support of.
Could you give your, uh, could you give your address for the record, please, Chris, please, Christopher?
16008 Hayloft Lane.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yeah, of course. Um, just wanted to share my support as a, as a citizen of Parker and of this community that I do not see any detriment to the Town of Parker or the neighborhood by this fence variance request. Additionally, when it comes to the, the comment that was made earlier about, I think you called it a fence canyon, was that correct? Is that the term that was used as one of the reasons why? Yeah, that, that term. There are homes that sit directly to the north and south of this road with line of sight in addition to the homes that actually sit on a higher foundation in this neighborhood allowing, still allowing visibility even over privacy fence. So I did want to just share that, um, those two points in support of this request from, uh, from Julie and from me.
Alright, thank you, Christopher. Uh, Rosemary, any further?
No, sir.
Okay, then we will close the public comment. Commissioners, any further information from staff or applicant? I'll go down the list again. John?
No, sir.
Uh, Rich?
Uh, no, not at this time.
Ruth Ann?
Could you put the, um, code back up, Rosemary, from Brianna's presentation?
Which section? The code for a variance or code for a fence?
The code for the variance.
Can you move to the next slide?
Yeah.
This is the entire section for the variance.
Okay. The, the question I have for staff is, when you, uh, worked on this part of the LDO originally, what did you have in mind for a peculiar or exceptional practical difficulty?
So, the instances that this is identifying is if a lot is long and skinny and there's a steep slope that would cause an encroachment to a step back or something similar to that. It would be more of a unique situation based on the lot, shape, size, slope, instances as that.
Okay, Ruth Ann?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, Kim?
Can you leave that up? That's my only request.
Okay. Kim?
Uh, no, I'm good. Thank you.
Eliana?
No, not at this time. Thank you.
Uh, Tracy?
I'm good.
Okay. Uh, we will close the public hearing at, blocked out my clock, 7:43. Alright, planning commission discussion. John, do you want to start it off?
Sure. Um, you know, this, this is unusual for us and as Brianna said, it's the first one she can remember in recent times. Very familiar with the fence on the east side, which initially was built by the developers of Bradbury Ranch. And then when they developed Carousel Farm, they just inherited that fence. But I look at it and looking at the pictures and it seems to have a very adequate space between the new six foot privacy fence and the preceding, uh, fence that was put up by Bradbury Ranch as just a backyard fencing to fence off their entire development. I, I really don't in my mind see that this would create a detriment to the public good. It, it's attractive. It's a short distance even with both the fences combined until you get to that cul-de-sac from Main Street. Driving by it frequently, never really noticed the fence, but I know that there's a tremendous amount of traffic that goes down that area and I'm sure there's a lot of noise that the homeowner deals with. So my position is that I'm probably not going to support denial and will probably be in support of a variance for these two homeowners.
Okay. Uh, Rich?
Okay. Uh, in the work that I do, I do go out to a lot of communities in, in, in Parker. So I see a lot of these things and, and I take notice of them because of what I do. And I've seen a mixture of split rail fences and the, uh, uh, privacy fences. And one in particular over in Stro Ranch, Motsenbacher, a couple hundred feet apart, there is a split rail fence with a sidewalk down the middle. And a few hundred feet away is a privacy fence, sort of the same similar situation. So, and I do think it, it's not a detriment to that community or to the Town of Parker. And, uh, but I think it would be an undue hardship to the homeowner. So I'm in favor of recommending to town council that they approve a variance for this privacy fence.
Okay. Uh, Ruth Ann?
Um, yes, I also am in favor of granting the variance. I, I find personally that, uh, they built the fence in good, in good faith. The HOA was managed by the builder, even more than a volunteer HOA association, a builder who's been heavily involved in actually building the property out and working with the landscape architecture and the landscape requirements. They should know better than to, um, to do that. So I think that to tear it down would be an undue hardship for them because they did build it in good faith. I also find that their proximity to Main Street being within 50 feet, in one's case, and 35 feet in the other case, creates for them a hardship because that is a, an arterial road. It's not like we're trying, they're trying to put up a privacy fence along a very wide, open, natural, open space area, um, like Harvey Property or something like that, uh, where they've got new construction on it. So, for that reason, I also support it. Um, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ruth Ann. Kim?
I also, wait, one more thing. I also say that I don't think there's any detriment because it's such a short, it's a very short, short piece and I don't think it provides a detriment towards the public having access to or being able to view the open space.
Alright, Kim?
Um, so I think it's a great lesson for both parties that HOAs are unfortunately not responsible for county codes. However, reading the, the section on the variance and specifically the portion of the variance that says, "Topographic conditions or other extraordinary and exceptional situation or conditions of such piece of property if such release may, make, if such relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good." So was the fence erected erroneously? I'm going to say yes. However, do I believe that there is a detriment to the public good? No. I also believe that these, um, two homeowners, you know, you, you kind of know what you were moving into with Main Street right behind you. However, you know, and again, these are some personal responsibilities with kids and dogs, knowing something you've moved into. However, because of where this is, I, I do think you have some, some exceptional circumstances with the amount of traffic, with the amount of foot traffic on such a busy road. I would, I'm in favor of granting the variance, but I, I do think that the homeowners need to work with the town and the HOA to either remove the split rail up to the point of where the privacy fence starts to come to some kind of compromise.
Thanks, Kim. Eliana?
Well, having served on a couple of HOAs, we are flawed. We make mistakes and I see this as one. I will support the variance. I see no difficulty. I see no detriment. And I see that they were unfortunately misguided. And, and because of that, I don't believe we should be punishing them for that.
Uh, Tracy?
I'm in support of the variance, Gary. I think that I echo what the fellow, my fellow commissioners have already stated. There are some very good, good points made and I am in favor.
Thank you, Tracy. Um, generally, I don't interject a lot, but I, I, I hear everybody's concerns. One of my concerns is from a legal standpoint is precedent. Are we setting a precedent to people all over town that are in a similar situation coming before this commission to ask for a variance? I mean, I think, you know, in, in our own personal condition or situation, we backed to Reva Ridge. Well, it's not an arterial, but some days it feels like it, especially when school's in session. Uh, and, uh, so.
In my discussion, I, I made a very specific point that it's, it's because it's next to Main Street.
Right.
And because it's a short space and because it's open. So I think my sense is that if, in terms of precedent, if we're very narrow in terms of why we're approving it or if town council is very narrow in terms of why it's approving it, we avoid the precedence issue.
But part of our discussion is supposed to guide their thinking and that's why I just asked the question. It wasn't to pose an argument. I was just saying, let's, what have we thought that part through? Because that's where I see the detriment to the public, not from this fence, but it's from the precedent that it sets. And, you know, how that might impact, you know, the future planning commissions or future town councils or future communities. Because you can get to the point, I, I think I agree with Kim said, they need to get either one fence or the other. It, it doesn't look very attractive to have both fences there. But it, you know, it, it is, uh, setting a precedent. I can see why, you know, perhaps the town came to the conclusion that they did. You know, I, I think I, I will, you know, certainly entertain a motion and we'll see where we go. Any further comments?
Gary, I'll, uh, I'll, I'll, uh, make an alternative motion to the recommended. I move the planning commission recommend town council approve the Carousel Farms filing one lot 11 block one fence variance to allow the six foot privacy fence adjacent to the open space with the following two conditions. The existing split rail fence adjacent to the privacy fence be removed and that the privacy fence be updated with additional decorative details in order to match the existing privacy fence along Main Street.
I'll second.
Okay, John has moved and Rich has seconded that planning commission recommend town council approve the Carousel Farms filing one lot 11 block one fence variance to allow the six foot privacy fence adjacent to open space with the following conditions. The existing split rail fence adjacent to the privacy fence must be removed and the privacy fence must be updated with additional decorative details in order to match the existing privacy fence along Main Street. And I will call the roll. John?
Hi.
Rich?
Hi.
Ruth Ann?
Hi.
Kim?
Hi.
Eliana?
Hi.
Uh, Tracy?
Hi.
Me? Nay. The motion passes 6-1. Alright. Uh, thank you.
Gary, we have another motion now. Gary, we have another motion now.
Right, right. Yeah, we have to do the second one. Sorry, John.
Sorry.
Got, I got.
Okay. I move, I move the planning commission recommend town council approve the Carousel Farms filing one lot 12 block one fence variance to allow the six foot privacy fence adjacent to the open space with the following two conditions. The existing split rail fence adjacent to the privacy fence be removed and that the privacy fence be updated with additional decorative details in order to match the existing privacy fence along Main Street.
I second.
It's been moved by John, seconded by Eliana, that planning commission recommend town council approve the Carousel Farms filing one lot 12 block one fence variance to allow the six foot privacy fence adj- the six foot privacy fence adjacent to open space with the following conditions. The existing split rail fence adjacent to the privacy fence must be removed, privacy fence was, must be updated with additional decorative details in order to match the existing privacy fence along Main Street. And again, we will call the roll. John.
Hi.
Rich.
Hi.
Ruth Ann.
Hi.
Kim.
Hi.
Eliana.
Hi.
Tracy. Tracy.
Hi.
And Gary, no, nay. All right, now I think we're done with that one. All right, the next item has been, item number 6B has been continued and we need a motion. Does anybody have the motion in front of them other than me?
I do not.
Okay, okay, Rich, go ahead.
The planning commission continue the public hearing for the Bowie property zoning to October the 8th, 2020.
I'll second.
Second.
By Rich, seconded by Kim, the planning commission continue the public hearing for the Bowie property to October 8th, 2020. All right, John.
Hi.
Rich.
Hi.
Ruth Ann.
Hi.
Kim.
Hi.
Eliana.
Hi.
Tracy.
Hi.
And I'm, I, passes unanimously. Bryce, are there any other items for the group?
No, just a reminder that the next meeting, there'll be another training before the meeting at 5:30.
And it'll be the mobile pizza again, you know, where you deliver it to everybody's house, right?
The virtual pizza.
Yeah, the virtual pizza, cool, it's cool. All right, well then we will adjourn this meeting at, lost my clock again, 7:56. Good night all.